Katturudhe parisutha namathukumai mundaavada
Lord repeat to the holy name of the Lord
Oru devanudhe pillai, tanudhe viddaarukaaga enna cheyaveendu?
A child of God, what he should do to his household?
Tanudhe kudumbathai, avan neppidi nattavendu?
How should he lead his family?
Tan pilligalodu, neppidi avan nattavendu?
How should he intervene with his children?
Vedathle devanudhe pilligal, tanudhe kudumbangalai neppidi nattatiyirukkara?
In the word of God, how have the children of God led their families?
Tanudhe kudumbathai, avan enna vedathle paramarikke vendu?
How should they take care of their families?
Edhakurithi naamindeki, ina maalevalile, sile vedavasanangalai naam sindhilai konduvaralam?
Let us bring to our thoughts this evening from the word of God about this.
Devanudhe edhiruparppe enna, devanudhe pilligal neppidi tanudhe kudumbangalai nattatiyirukkara? Enna marindirukkavendhiyadhe avasayam?
It is needful for us to know how, what the children of God should be and what is the plan of God concerning them?
Anegarukku kudumbavalkai amindirukkare, anal adhe nalla vedathle amaya villai?
Many of them have their family lives settled but it's not in a good state.
Anegar vidugirile irukkaragal, virukkara? Anal tanudhe vidugalai, tanudhe kudumbathai, sariyana vedathle paramarikke, mudiyada oru lai kanna padukkara?
There are many houses and families but they are not able to maintain the families in good aspects.
Nam, ina raankkali, namudhe kudumbatharai, namudhe kudumbathai, neppidi nattavendu? Nam marindirukkavendhiyadhe avasayam?
It is needful for us as to how we should maintain and lead the family these days.
Erendal, kudumbam enbadhe oru kobi?
Because a family is a church.
Adhe naam sariyana vedathle paramarikka vittal, adhe oru koyilaga irukkade, adhe oru kalareaga kanna padu?
If we do not take care of a family in a good manner, then it will not be a church but it will be a sepulchre.
Anegarudhe vidugal kalare boladhae, oru sunnali dhan irukkara?
Many of their families are found in a situation of sepulchas.
Anumrundhan valkaila, janangal vrakti nattakara?
That is why people are becoming very sad in their life.
Katturudhe parisutha namathuke mahimai mundaavada?
Lord repeat to the holy name of the Lord.
Modalaavadhe, oru devanudhe manidhan, ilavatal oru bhaktan, endru oru aavi kurivavan endhu solukkara? Tanudhe pilligalake, avan, sile karigalai chulli kodukkavendhiyadhe avasayam?
Firstly, a child of God or a devout person should say certain things which are divine to his children.
Oru thaithaan, oru nalla teacher.
A mother is a good teacher.
Oru tagappan than, oru nalla valigatti.
A father is a good way...
Oru pillike, andha tagappan than, nalla oru role model.
A father is a good role model to the child.
Avan innorunthu poikattukkunnavendhiyadhe avasayam illai?
It is not needful for him to go and learn from anyone else.
Analathan olakathle solukkara, thaai pola, mahal endhu solukkara?
That is why in the world they say that as the mother is, so is the child.
Oru devanudhe pillai endhu solukkara, oru thaai, andha pillike, oru nalla munmadriaga, oru tagappan, andha pillike, oru nalla valigattiaga, tannpadavendhiyadhe avasayam?
A child of God or a mother should be a good example to the child and the father should be a good role model to the child.
Ivilakal, rinduverume, sariyaga, oru pillike amindu vittal, andha pillai, nichiyamagave, varungalathle, katturukaaga nirkkukudiavani, oruvaakkapaduvaan?
If both of them are unitedly working together in this manner, then in the future days, he will be the one, the child will be the one who is working for the Lord.
Adiyagamathle naam parkumuladhe?
When we read in Genesis?
18 madhikaram?
Chapter 18.
Ange 19 vasanathle, Abrahamukkuri thae, kattar solukkara vaathae naam parkalam?
Verse 19, we see about the word which the Lord tells about Abraham.
Avan tan pillai, tan kudumbatharai, neppidi nattavandu?
How he shall command his household?
Edhakurithi, anghe vedam alakaga chulli yaradhe?
From above this verse, we see that how it is prescribed.
Appudhu, avanukku pilligalai kireyadhe?
At that time, he did have no children.
Avanukku irundhalam, Isma veldan?
All he had is only Ishmael.
Innu Isakku perakkave illai?
And yet, Isaac is not born?
Anal, avanukku, kattar chunnar, avan tanudhe pilligalai neppidi nattavandu? Endhu alakaga chulli yarindhar?
But the Lord told about him, how he will command his children?
Adiyagam, 18 madhikaram, 19 vasanam?
18:19 of Genesis.
Kattar Abrahamukkusamudhe niravichumbriyaa, avan tan pilligalakkum, tanukku pinvarum tan viddaarukkum, ningal neediyum, nyayatthum seyidhe, katturudhe valiyya kaathinadavungalendhu, katthaliduvan enbadhe arindirukkareen? Avan tan viddaaruke, needi, nyayam, katturudhe valigalai kaathinadavungalendhu, katthaliduvan?
He will command them to keep the way of the Lord and to do justice and judgment.
Modalaavadhe, katturudhe valile nattakachulli, naam namudhe pilligalai kuppodikke vendu?
Firstly, we should command our children to walk in the way of the Lord.
Namudhe viddaaruka naam chulli kodukkavendhiyadhe modalpogri, katturudhe valigalile nattavungal?
Firstly, what we have to command our household members is to walk in the way of the Lord.
Manushanukke, ina olakathle chemyayithu ondrukka, valigal, anegam undhe, adhanudhe mudivu, maranam, endhu cholla padukkara?
There are ways which seem good lead to man in the world but the end of it is death.
Vedathle, palla valigalai kurithi chulli yarukkara?
There are many ways cited from the word of God.
Poyivali, mayivali, vedanuvundakkavali, nittiyavali, neppidi palavidamana valigal chutikaattapadukkara?
There are many ways which are told as evil ways and false ways and the ways which will lead to truth and eternal life.
Abrahamukkuri thae, devanudhe edhiruparppe, avan tan viddaaruke, katturudhe valiyay kaathinadavungalendhu, avan poodipan endhu, naam arindirukkara?
The expectation of the Lord concerning Abraham was that he will command his children and his household concerning him.
Adhu, omudhe pilligalai kene, chulla kudiyadhe oru katthalayaga irukkavendu?
That should be a command which you should tell your children.
Katturudhe valiyay kaathinadapadu enbadhe, oru devanudhe pillike, ilavatal oru kudumbam nanraaga amaya, adhu oru valivai paye erupadikodukkara?
For a family to be settled in a good state and for a child to grow in a divine manner, he should command the way of the Lord.
Biblea kayila vayitukonde, neethini ayam illamal, naam sailbadakkuda?
Keeping the word of God in our hands, we should not work without justice and judgment.
Ningal adhe, ningal omudhe pilligalai, aarambakalangalile, poodikke vendu?
That is what you should command your children in the early stages.
Ningal thavaraana karigalai, pilligalai kuppodikke vee, kuda?
You should not teach evil things to your children.
Oru veela, omudhe kene, sile karigalai, jayam illavittal, guda, ningal jayam illada karigalai chulli kodukkukuda? Jaikkara karigalai chulli kodukkavendu?
Although you have known with train certain things, you should not tell your, teach your children about the defeated things but teach them victorious ones.
Omudhe viddaaruka, ningal neediye kattukodukkare?
Have you taught your household members of the justice?
Omudhe viddaarukken, yaayate ningal kattukodukkare?
Have you taught your household members about judgment?
Uladhe, uladupadi, pesa chulli kodukkare?
Have you taught them to speak, what is ye, is ye?
Katturudhe valiyay kaathinadavungalendhu, ningal katthalidukkare?
Have you commanded them to walk in the ways of the Lord?
Appidhi ningal nattakavittan, ningal omudhe kudumbathai nattavittal, ningal, ambu viswasaathin tagappan alla?
If you do not lead your children in this manner, then you not fathers of faith.
Enneka, anegu thaaimaragal, tanudhe pilligalai tarumaraga nattukkara?
Today, many mothers are leading their children in a perverse manner.
Anegu tagappan ma, tanudhe pilligalai tarumaraga nattukkara?
Many fathers lead their children perversly.
Avanul, gaaneerukku, tanudhe pilligalai, deviigamaga valarka, avanul kusakthi illai?
Many of them do not have the power in them to make them to grow their children in a divine manner.
Kollandiyaakirukkumuladhe, adigamaga paasathinaale, avanul kandikamalai vittudukkara?
When they are as children, because of the more love they have inside them, they are not correcting their children.
Adhukpinu valarundha, pinbhandhu pillai, kandikke tanme, avanul kusakthi illamalai, poivudukkara?
Finally, when they are grown up, they are not able to correct them at all.
Oru sallarla, thavurukke, avanul munmadriaga kanna padukkara?
Some of them are examples for the wrong manners.
24 agamathle, 22 madhikaram, 3 vasanathle?
2 Chronicles 22 verse 3.
Ange, thunmarkamai nattaka, avanudhe thaai, avanukke, aaloosanikariaga, irundhaal, endhu cholla padukkara?
Here it is said that his mother was his counselor to do wickedly.
Avan thavaraayi nattakravikke, avanudhe thaaidan, oru karnamaga irundhaal?
It was his mother who was the reason for him to walk wickedly.
Avanudhe, varungalam, deviigamaga amaya, andha thaai, myarchikave illai?
That mother did not take care of him that he might be divine in his future.
Ningal yoosuthu paringal, omudhe thaai, tagappan ma, neppidi irundhaargal, ningal ipparu oru thaai, tagappana irukkare? Ningal omudhe pilligalai, neppidi nattukkare?
Just think and see as to how your mother and father was, now you are a parent, then how you are dealing with your children?
Abraham, ina vishayathle, remba gavanna magairindha?
Abraham was very careful in this matter.
Tanudhe pillai, kurithi, oru vaathae ketta buladhe, avanu ekuthu kaalaitukkundu, pogallama, endhu ketta buladhe, andha vishayathle, avan otukkullave, maatena, endhu chulli vittan?
When he was asked whether he could take his son to Egypt, he said that he could not withstand that matter.
Erendal, katturudhe valile nattapadu, devan namukku kodutha, oru katthalai?
Because it was the command given to him that he should walk in the way of the Lord.
Ningalum, gude, katturudhe valile nattapinandhu, oru kalathle chunnavarkal?
You also said that you will walk in the ways of the Lord once upon a time.
26 agaram, 17 vasanathle?
Deuteronomy 26:17.
Ange, enna cholla padukkara?
What is told here?
Naan, avar valivali nattandhu, avadhe katthalagale kaikkolvain, kiltpadivain, endhu, avarukki, nee vaakkukoduthai, endhu cholla padukkara?
It is said that thou hast avowed the Lord this day to be thy God, that you would keep his statutes and walk in his ways and his commandments.
Naan, avanul valivali nattapain, avadhe sattathke kiltpadivain, endhu, indhu, nee, avarukka vaakkukoduthai?
You have avowed to the Lord this day to walk in his ways and to keep his commandments.
Rakhikkappadu poodhitile, naam appidithan devanudhe laa vaakkukodukkukram, inuven, naam, omudhe valigalai vittam, aari, pogamatene, andhavare, endhu ningal vaakkukodukkukkare?
That is how we have vowed unto the Lord that we will walk in his ways when we were saved.
Vivaan drake, purushan manevi ke vaakkukodukkaran, manevi purushanuke, vaakkukodukkara?
On the day of wedding, the husband is giving a vow to the wife and the wife is giving a vow to the husband.
Onakkay manevi ayirupen, onakkay purushana ayirupen, onakkay unmiyaga ayirupen, unneye paramaripen, unneye esipen, ibriyala, andhake, yaro chulli kodukkati chullukkara?
They are telling what they commanded, that they will be their husband, they will love them, they will be sincere to them till the end.
Anal, adhu devanudhe airtle, devanukku sanneedikkumunbaga chunnom, enbadhe, avanul marandudukkara?
But they are forgetting that they are confessing this in the presence of the Lord.
Vedam chullukkara, avadhe valigalai, naam nattapinandhu, nee, vaakkukoduthai?
The word of God says that you have vowed that you will walk in his ways.
Avadhe valile, naam nattakkurama?
Have you walked in his ways?
Avadhe valigalai, namudhe pilligalai, nattukkurama?
Are we leading our children in his ways?
Paasam irukkavendu, aasay irukkavendu, pilligal men, neesam irukkavendu, anal, katturudhe valigal endhu solukkara vishayathle, ningal sariyana oru katthalayodhu pilligalai valarkavendu?
You should have love and passion towards the children but walking in the ways of the Lord, you should command them.
Thavidhi, tanne kurithi, pesumuladhe?
When David is speaking about himself?
24 agaram, 22 vasanathle?
2 Samuel 22:22.
Katturudhe valigalai, naam kaathukkundu vandhen, endhu, avan chullukkara?
He says that he has kept the ways of the Lord.
Katturudhe valigalai, avan kaathukkundabidinadaan, tanudhe pilligalai, katturudhe valigalai kaathinadavungalendhu, singhassamathle akkam, amaru munbaga, avanukka, avan katthaliduvan?
Because he had kept the ways of the Lord even before his children should take the seat on the throne, he asked them to keep the ways of the Lord.
Oru devanudhe pillai endhu solukkaran, thaanunk, katturudhe valile nattandhu, tanudhe viddaarayum, katturudhe valile nattakka, avan myarchikke vendhiyadhe avasayam?
A child of God means he should walk in the ways of the Lord and also command his household members to walk in the ways of the Lord.
Katturudhe valigal nattakran, endhu sonnal, enna artam?
What is the meaning of walking in the ways of the Lord?
Onde, jeetvithulath tholviyalai, nee, agathavendhiyadhe avasayam?
It is needful for you to cast away the defeats in your life.
24 agamom, 17 madhikaram, 6 vasanathle?
2 Chronicles 17:6.
Katturudhe valigalil, avan irudheyam, urchaagum kondadhe?
His heart was working merely in the ways of the Lord.
Anavidinal, avan vikkaragaleyum, meedagaleyum, thopugaleyum, yuravavittu, agathivittan?
Therefore, he took away the high places and groves out of Judah.
Katturudhe valigalile nattakravikke, onudhe irudheyam, urchaagum undhal, onudhe valkaila, sile maachangal, undagum?
If your heart is lifted up to walk in the ways of the Lord, then you will have certain changes in your life.
Parunga, Abrahamudhe viddla, pariyasam guda panna mudiyad?
In the house of Abraham, they could not even criticize.
Adhuk punishment enna dhrima?
Do you know what the punishment is?
Abrahamudhe viddlarunna, nee, pariyasam manakuda, pariyasam manakuda, viddu vittu, endhu? Odani vellipad?
You should not even criticize in the house of Abraham, if so, you should get out of the house.
Abrahamudhe viddlarunna, nee, vaakkutthathasandhadiyaa, arukkame, thavare, Isma velaga, ulle irukka, anumadi kireyad?
You should be a promised descendant in the house of Abraham, you should not be like Ismael.
Nee, Abrahamudhe viddlarunna, keethuraludhe pilligalaga, irunna, ulle irukkumudiyad?
If you are the children of Keethura, you cannot be in the house of Abraham.
Nee, Isma velaga irunnaal, ulle irukkumudiyad? Nee, keethuraludhe pilligalaga, irunnaal, ulle irukkumudiyad? Agarudhe pillayarunnaal, Abrahamudhe viddla, irukkumudiyad?
If you are Ismael, you cannot be in the house of Abraham, if you are the son of Keethura, you cannot be in the house of Abraham, neither the son of Hegel.
Anak, keethuraludhe pillai, enna chulluvaanga, Abraham, engal tagappanandhu chulluvar?
But Keethura's children will say that Abraham is a father.
Isma velanen chulluva, nee, tagappan Abraham than, endhu chulluva?
Ishmael will say that his father is Abraham.
Adhu unmiyaga irundhalum?
Although it is true?
Anak, katturudhe valile kaathinadakada manushan, katturudhe viddla irukkumudiyad?
He who does not keep the ways of the Lord cannot be in the house of the Lord.
Katturudhe valiyay kaathinadakada manushan, inda viddla, katturudhe uuliyathle, ilavatal, inda viswasa viddla, inda viswasa vaadiyala, avan konjanalai, nelanirukkamattan?
He who does not keep the ways of the Lord cannot be in the faith life, in the house of faith till the end.
Ondru, nee aapova, ilavatal, uuliyarkal, parisuthavangalai, unne thuratti uduvar?
You will either go by yourself or the saints will put you out.
Onne, avangalai vettirivanga, andha, saral chunnan, ivanai porambakkum?
Sarah said, you should cast him off.
Ivanai porambai, thallum?
You cast him outside, he said.
Eenali, ivan, intha sabaila irundhaal, avan sudundalavaliyaga, irupadillai?
Because even if he is in this church, he will not walk as an inheritor.
Sabainudhe kolappavadigal, paralavu rajjithukki, chellaiyeladhe?
The confucers of the church will not go into the kingdom of heaven.
Abraham, avan devanudhe manidhan, avan devanudhe manidhan aanal, avan tan viddla, pilligal, viddaar, aneyvarukkun chullukkara, katturudhe valiyay kaathinadavungal?
Abraham was a man of God and if they are the children of God, they should keep the ways of the Lord.
Naan, oru periyavpanakkarudhe viddukku, poivindhen?
I went to a rich man's house.
Nalla vasidhi undhe?
He had all the things.
Alal, nalla oru viswasi?
And he was a good believer too.
Avan viddukku, poivirukkamudhe?
When I went to his house?
Avan, nalla oru aavi kurivay, atmosphere ulle oru family.
The, in the family, had a good atmosphere of spiritualities.
Andha thaai, andha maamiar?
That mother-in-law?
Avan remba, nalla oru prayer variyah?
She was a good prayer warrior.
Nightla, andha sabaila prayer chain, sonna, ivangal, patthamani kavundukkara, kalaile, nalmaniki, ivangal, orayala, missivanga, andha time fulla, edhuthi, jomunva?
If they say it is a prayer chain in the church, then she will come at ten and will pray till four.
Appidhi, aarmonnara, yelmonnara, nalla jepipam?
Like this, she used to pray for six and seven hours together.
Avangalukku vasidhi, kooradukka, jebikavanda, eenadal, vasidhi, arukkame, endhu? Neranjirje, paralavu, paralavutukka, sabai kaka, tanudhe aavi kurivavalarchika, taappidhi jepipam?
She had all the facilities together, so she did not pray for the facilities for herself, but she used to pray for the spiritual life and growth and heaven.
Avan, avamarmagan, Chennai lo, oru periyan, nalla oru vasidhiyana, oru nappar?
Her son-in-law was a good facilitator in Chennai.
Avare, kurithu, pallarum, pala vidangalile, pesav?
Many, them will speak about him in many ways.
Anal, ma, 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 mache, omukka, avarapati, oru sallarukke, nalla abiprayangal undhe, oru sallarukke, vitthiasamaana, abiprayangal undhe?
And therefore, some of them had good intentions concerning him, some of them had wrong intentions too.
Anal, naam, oru vishay, andha viddukku, poivirukkamudhe?
But once, when I had gone to the house?
Andha maamiar, tanudhe marumana, patti solukkara?
That mother-in-law is telling about the son-in-law.
Kalaile, nalmani, jabo, faytham, avida, remba granda, enga nattakon? Enga nattakon, viddla?
The four o'clock praising will take place more grand than in the faith home.
Pilligal, remba vasidhiyana, ivan, remba vasidhiyana, anak, faytham, mari, missivam, kalaile, nalmani, jabo, viddla, granda?
They are in good facilitations but in their house, the four o'clock praising will take place as in the faith home.
Marumagan, vandhu, ajjamaniki, praise, andha, praising, muddinavane, oru study kodupar?
The son-in-law will give a study after the praising.
Adhi, yana kere, remba preojinavarko?
And that was, it is very useful for me.
Adhi, yana kere, remba preojinavarko?
That is more useful for me itself.
Adhi, yana kere, remba bhaktiyaga?
And it is very devout to me also.
Arumya, oru tips, mari, alaha kodupar?
He will give as a tips every day.
Eppidhi, orukun, yoosuthu paringa?
Just think and see how it is?
Avan uuliyakarangala?
They are not servants of God.
Avan, vandhu, yalekalala?
They are not poor people.
Yellava vasidhiyirukke, anak, avangal, vandhu, katturudhe valile, tanudhe pilligal, nattakkunavundhal, avla urchaagamara, arundu, kaalangataali, nightli, vasanam padichu? Kalaile, endhichan, the pilligal, vandhu, ukkandavane, praisingla, sodramani, partu, badi, ellam, muddichu, andha pilligal, kene, oru, pasana?
They had all the facilities with them but that he might show the word of God unto them, he used to read the verse in the night itself and get prepared for it and tell them a verse in the morning.
Abraham, bithi, enna chulli yarukke, tan pilligalai, avan chulluva, needi, nyayam, katturudhe valigalai kaathinadavungal, endhu, avan katthaliduvan, endhu, naam, arindirukkara?
About Abraham, it is said that he will command his children and his household and that they shall keep the way of the Lord and to do justice and judgment.
Avanukke, tanukku, oru pillai, devan koduthal, vaakkutthathasandhadi kireyatal, avan, ibrittha, valarkano, inna vedathle, avan, oruvaakkano, idha, avan mindla, oditya, endhi?
Like this, his mind was going on that if he should get a seed after his promise, then he should grow him likewise.
Omukka, unnan, rendham, ono, yelavu pilligal, rukke, omukka, pilligal, neppidi valakkunavano, omukka, mindla, neppidi, oditya?
You might have one or two or three or seven children, how is your mind going on to grow them?
Nalla padikavachirno?
We should educate them well?
Sondathle, ponni, adukkukuda, veliuvulapi, ponni, adukkano?
Should not take a bride of our relatives but should take from outside?
Elaara, aachiriappadukka vedathle, remba granda, pannikudukano?
We should make it grand in a miraculous way like others.
Ippidhi than, nama, inneki, vandhu, plan manidhiyada, irukkaram, thavare, nama, pillu, singhassamathle, ku, pono, andha, sepudavindhe, thaai, eppidhi, tanudhe pillai, rinduveru, singhassamathle, oru, valadu, bokkathle, arukkano, oru, thayadu, bokkathle, arukkano, ibrittha, avanudhe thaai, aasay, patta?
That is what we are planning today, we are not planning as the sons, as the mother of Zebedee, who wanted both her sons to sit one on the right and one on the left side.
Nam, pilligal, bithi, naam, apdisindikrama?
Are we thinking about our children like this?
Ekkaalan, thunikumudhe, am pilligalala, kattavu, endha, arutthal, irunnaal, parandu, vandhu, seyavendu?
Whatever my children are studying, let them come to the heights where everybody should come and join.
Nam, mindla, apdi, odhuradhe, illai?
Our minds are not running like this.
Nalla padikano?
They should be...
Nalla result, chudukano?
They should get good results.
Nalla vella, kereyakano?
Should get a good job.
Nalla, arutthala, settle, pannanoo?
Should be settled in a good state.
Ellam, mudduchitna, namudhe, aththuma, dripti, arunna, idhla, aththuma, dripti, aagave, aagad?
If everything is alright, then her soul is satisfied, if not, it's not satisfied.
Eppudhu, vandhalu, naam, man, vittar, kattare, sandikano, andha, mindla, than, omudhe pilligalai, ninga, kudumbathai, ninga, konduvaravendu?
You should lead your family in a state that whenever the Lord comes, we should meet as a family.
Oru, picchakaranake, orunnaal, arisi, konjam, koda, karchicha?
To a beggar, one day, he received more of rice.
Odane, avanukku, karpanila, parakaram, ituvattan?
Immediately, he began to float in his imaginations.
Enna, konjam, koda, konja, arisi, karcha?
If a little more of rice we get?
Adha, sethu, ochaa?
And we just save it?
Adha, ivlavu, panamas, endhirichinna?
And if we should earn a lot of money with this?
Adavachu, oru business, panna?
And start a business like this?
Adhula, develop, paita?
And develop with it?
Indhu, urlo, oru, nalla, arutthala, ponni, edhuthu?
And take a girl from a good place?
Adhukku, oru, amblapayam, varunda?
And a male shall bond to her?
Ippidhi, avam, poividha, arukka, karpanila, ena, anegi, konja, veil, jasthi, konja, arisi, koda, karchicha, padukkadi, yoosuthu, day, poividha?
Like this, the sun was going on, ahai, and he got more of rice and he was rising up in his imaginations.
Andha, pillai, av, addichitana, oru, addil, avla, addikinun, sona?
If he should, if she should beat that child, then I should beat her, she thought.
Addicha, addil, andha, thiruvodhu, vandhu, odanji, irundha, arisi, la, manila, kotipusi?
The way he beat, all the rice just fell down into the mud.
Appanam, yoosutha, avan, nama, picchakara, nama, eni, ippidi, yoosutha?
Only then, he thought, I am a beggar, why I had thought like this?
Onudhe, valkai, vandhu, oru, pullin, poo, vay, ponnradhe?
Your, your life is like a flower.
Time, muddinda, ennichidho? Vadiro?
When the time is over, it will fade off.
Plastik poo, vadhu, koda, oru, rinthu, shani, kyo, om poo, apdi, kireyadhe, kalaile, malarundhu, maalile, vaadum, pullin, poo, ku, pannadhu, onudhe, valkai?
Your life is as the flower of the grass, even if it's a plastic flower, it will just stay longer.
Onudhe, pilligalai, onudhe, kudumbatharai, katturudhe valile, nee, nattavendu?
You should lead your children and your household in the ways of the Lord.
2 agamada?
Secondly?
Adiyagamom, 35:2?
Genesis 35:2.
Yakobu, tanudhe kudumbathai, neppidi nattatinan?
Jacob, how he led his household?
Modalaavadhe, Abrahamukkuri thae, nambuttham?
Firstly, we considered about Abraham?
Avan tan viddaray, katturudhe valile, nattath, prayasapattan?
He walked that he might lead his children in the ways of the Lord.
2 agamadhe, Yakobu, tan kudumbathai, neppidi nattatinan? Viddaray, neppidi nattatinan?
Secondly, how did Jacob lead his household?
Appudhu, Yakobu, tan viddarayum, tanudukudai, irundha, matranayvarayum, moki, omukka, arutthal, irukkara, aniyya, devingalai, vilakipotte, omukka, suttamanikundu, omukka, vastrangalai, maatungal? Yakobu, tanudhe kudumbatharuke, chunnava, oru, ariuvai, aniyya, daivangalai, omukka, vittaa, agathivudengal, omukka, vastrangalai, maatungal, omukka, suttamanikundan, endhu, tanudhe, kudumbatharuke, katthaliduvan?
The advice which Jacob advised his household members was to put away the strange gods that are among them and decline and change their garments.
Ondru, katturudhe valiyay kaathinadapadu, rendhaavadhe, oru, suttiyirikappadu, oru, valkai, valum, mudiyaga, avargalai, ningal, payichip?
Firstly, keeping the ways of the Lord and secondly, you practicing them to walk in a sanctified manner.
Suttiyirippe, enbadhe, namudhe, sariyathle, obur, nimudamun, nattandukkundu, irukkara?
Sanctification is what should take place every second in our life, in our body.
Inna sariyathle, ratthasuttiyiripun, kere, nee, thungalal, muddichinadhal, oodanadhal, chaaptal, nattal, enndhiti, enge, omukka, oru, ratthasuttiyirippe, oru, dialysis, nattandukkadi?
The blood dialysis is taking place in yourself, whether you sleep or eat or run or walk or do anything.
Adhu, vallavu, oru, aavi kurivay, krisavankke, obur, seconda, oru, suttiyiripun, nattandukkadi?
Like this, a sanctification takes place in a spiritual Christian.
Vaaththaila, thavumaritha, odane, oru, suttiyirippe?
If he should stagger in his words, there should be sanctification.
Namudhe, petchilas, thaviritha, odane, oru, suttiyirippe?
If you should just leap off from your words, then you should sanctify.
Namudhe, parveela, thaviritha, odane, oru, suttiyirippe?
If you should stagger in your sight, then there should be sanctification.
Eendhanda karigalile, namukka, thadumacham, undhal, odanak, odan, oru, suttiyirippe, namudhe, viddaaruka, namukka, nattandukkadi?
Whatever things you might stumble, immediately, there should be sanctification in you and your family.
Oru, kurikappadu, arutthukka, vandhu, odane, Yakobu, chunnan, ini, adhustepukku, ponnuna, namudhe, viddar, ellarame, suttiyirikavendhiyadhe avasayam?
When he came to a particular place, Jacob said, if we have to go to the next step, then we should sanctify us and the household.
Srisa, valkaila, suttiyirikappadhamal, munneri, pogam, mudiyad?
In the Christian life, with the sanctification, you should not go ahead.
Appidhi, avan, munneri, ponnalam, avan lakkai, thoda, mudiyad?
If he should go ahead like this, he will not reach the goal.
Inna arutthal, naam, chullukkara, elathi, maatungal, naam, Betelukku, povav?
It is at this place, he says, you can't cast away everything and let's go to Betel.
Betel, enbadhe, devan, manidhanai, sanditha, oru, edam?
Betel is the place where God met man.
Ilavatal, manidhan, devanai, sanditha, oru, edam?
Or it's the place where man met God.
Avan, adhavasanathle, avan, solukkara, naam, yelundhu, Betelukku, poivuduvav?
It's the next verse, he says, let us rise and go up to Betel.
Appa, Betel, adhu, devanudhe viddu, ilavatal, devanoodhu, nee, inayekudiyavu, oru, anubavam?
Betel is a situation where there's the house of God, where you're united with God.
Andhavu, unne, sandikkara, andha, mahimila, sandikkara, anu, thukki, nee, varavendu, manal, omukka, kule, oru, suttiyirippe, om viddaarukkule, nattakkavendhiyadhe avasayam?
If there should be a state where you should meet God, then there should be a sanctification which takes place in you and the household.
Enga, suttiyirippe, guruthu, rinthu, kare, avan, chullukkara?
If it is sanctification here, it's, he tells about two things.
Ondru, aniyya, daivangalai, agathinagal, machundu, omudhe, vastratthai, maatungal?
Firstly, you put away the strange gods and secondly, you change your garments.
aniyya, daivam, irukka, varakkam, nee, pinavin, viddukku, poichara, mudiyad?
As long as you have strange gods in you, you cannot go to their father's house.
Enga, aniyya, daivam, endhu, Yakobu, chullukkara, oru, chutikattukkara, oru, karim, enna?
What is the thing with Jacob's depicting of strange gods?
Ange, Raagel, oru, aniyya, daivathodhu, vandhu, vandhu, endhu?
Then Rachel was coming with a strange god.
Avalkke, tagappan, viddavittu, vandhalo, varumbaladhu, oru, siruthuputhi, endhu, vandhu, vandhu?
Although she came from her father's house, she had a habit of stealing also.
Ange, avale, kondu, voi, Betel, charka, muddiyad?
It was not possible to take her to Betel.
Ilavatal, tagappan, viddla, voi, avale, charka, vikki, muddiyad?
Or she could not be taken to the father's house.
Anala, avale, vandhu, Betel, ku, poiv, charamudiyad?
She could not go and reach Bethlehem.
Eenadal, aniyya, daivam, irundhal, oru, manidhan, Bethlehem, Yesu, irukkara, arutthukku, poichara, mudiyad?
If there is a strange god, then one cannot go to Bethlehem or the place where Jesus is.
Avan, chunnan, anak, Raagelade, kiltpadiyavillai?
He told, but Rachel did not obey.
Purushanukku, kuda, teriyama, tagappunudhe, andha, vikkaragale, thiridhi, kundu, vandhu, vattan?
Even without her husband's knowledge, she stole away the idol of her father.
Ippala, avan, pinnali, vandhu, solukkara, nee, tagappan, viddukku, pora, poyo, anak, enne, ensiyada, siruthuputhi, oru, poogad, endhu, solukkara?
Now, Liban came behind him and said, it's good that you go to your father's house but do not go with that.
Yakobukke, teriyadanala, enne, solukkara, yaathu, nee, kandu, vidi, avan, ennichika, kondrala, solukkara?
Jacob, because he do not know about this, said, if whomever you find it, they will be a slave.
Ellan, thadavi, pathal, kerekave, illa?
They searched all over but did not get it.
Yaathu, irukke?
Because whom it is found with?
aniyya, daivam, yaathu, irukke? Raagel, irukke?
With whom is the idol found with Rachel?
Raagel, remba, alag, anak, putti, remba, alakadhar, endhi?
Rachel was very beautiful but her habit is also beautiful.
Remba, putti, remba, alag, endhi, ivan, pinnala, ponna, anak, karaisila, patha, ava, edhili, puttili, endha, remba, alag, iyada, endha?
He went behind her, thinking that she is very beautiful and even her nature was beautiful like this.
Yarmeen, nambala, karaisila, patha, aniyya, daivam, ivan, chethuponna, parugada, enge, tenbadiche? Avulde, ku, darutukula, andha, aniyya, daivam, irundhadhe, Yakobu, kandu, vidi?
Nobody believed that she had idol but only when she was dead, Jacob found out this idol.
Anal, oru, tiruktharshana, maadi, solukkara, aniyya, daivam, irunnaal, ensiyinka, agathivudengal, endhu, sona, anak, andha, vaaththi, kaval, kiltpadiyavu, mudiyavillai?
But as a prophet, prophecy, he said, if you have strange gods, you put away, but she did disobey.
Anumrundha, kattar, enna, vannar, dhrima?
Therefore, you know what the Lord has done?
Adiyagamom, 35:1, 11 bodhle, aval, Ebrathavukku, poguravalileye, avala, marikavichu, avala, adakkam, muddichtar, eenak, Ebrathala, Betel, yesu, irukkara, arutthukku, poichara, viddavai, illai?
Therefore, the Lord made her to die in the way to Ephrahat, which is Bethlehem and she could not go to the place where Jesus was born.
Parunga, evlavo, avan, adigamai, avala, neesithan, anak, ivan, Betel, poichara, vay, illai?
He loved her to a great extent but she did not reach Bethlehem.
Omukka, pilligalai, nee, suttiyirippe, chulli, kudanga?
You teach your children about sanctification?
Kattadhe, samothal, irunna, aniyya, daivath, agathu, chullungai?
In the presence of God, you make them to remove strange gods.
Porulasai, oru, vikkaragam?
Covetousness is an idol.
Morattattam, oru, vikkaragam?
And the stubborn nature is also an idol.
Avabakti, oru, vikkaragam? Avabakti, oru, vikkaragam?
Ungodliness is an idol.
Katturudhe parisutha namathuke, mahimai mundaavada?
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Oru, devanudhe pillai, endhu, solukkaran, aniyya, daivathodhu, avan, payanappadamudiyad?
A child of God cannot travel with a strange god.
aniyya, daivathodhu, nee, payanappadhal, onudhe, valkaila, oru, ilakkai, nee, thandi, payanappadave, mudiyad?
If you want traveling with a strange god, you cannot go beyond a certain goal.
Samuel, chollumuladhe, aniyya, daivangalai, ningal, agathivudengal, endhu, chullukkara?
When Samuel speaks, he says, you put away strange gods.
aniyya, daivangalai, ningal, vittu, vittal, than, omukka, kattar, oru, oru, ke, ningal, aradhane, seyada, than, kattar, omukka, kahay, ettham, seyivar?
Only if you leave the strange gods and worship the Lord God alone, he can help you.
Yum, modalam, Samuel, yellam, madhikarathle, naam, parkumuladhe?
In first Samuel, chapter 7?
4 vasanathle?
Verse 4?
Avargal, paala, yam, asthoti, vellikki, vittu, kattar, oru, oru, ke, aradhane, seyadar?
They put away Baal and Ashtot and they worshiped the Lord God alone.
1 Samuel, 7, 3, avan, telivana, aaloosanai, chulli, kodukkara?
In first Samuel, 7:3, he counsels them clearly.
aniyya, daivangalai, omukka, nadu, vittu, agathivudengal, kattar, oru, oru, ke, aradhane, seyengal?
You put away the strange gods and serve the Lord God alone.
aniyya, daivam, irukkumuladhu, kattar, omukka, kahay, ettham, seyey, yelad?
As long as the strange gods are with you, the Lord cannot work for you.
Ningal, yaray, vanandukkare?
Whom are you going to worship?
Omukka, kule, oru, suttiyirippe, avasayam?
Each of them needs a sanctification.
Omudhe, pilligalai, ka, oru, suttiyirippe, ningal, nattatala?
For your children, you should conduct a sanctification.
2 agamadhe, vastratthai, maatungal, endhu, chulli, koduthan?
Secondly, he commanded them to change their garments.
Adhu, namudhe, jeetvithulath tholviyalai, kandhikaradhe?
That shows the failures in your life.
Ilavatal, namudhe, neethigalai, kandhikaradhe?
Or it shows their righteousness.
Sagari, Amuna, madhikarathle, parkumuladhe?
In Sagaraya, chapter 3? in 2 Samuel 3 a man of God went to the presence of God and Satan also went to that place to cause evil if so, what is the meaning? Satan had the power in him to make a group evil to him he is a man of God he was a priest but Satan is turning to do evil to him what was the reason for it? that was the filthy garments which he was close to the prophet Isaiah says that all my righteousness are filthy garments with your righteousness, you cannot go to heaven you should put on God's righteousness what does the angel of God do? he is changing the filthy garments from the priest and gave him a good garment when he clothed him with that change of frame, then he could not do that evil and went away from that place your righteousness, your wisdom, your way you should not wear it your righteousness, you should not wear it your righteousness and pride cannot take you to heaven, when you are boasting about yourself, then you are giving room for Satan to work with you firstly, you should command your family members to keep the ways of the Lord secondly, you should command your family members to sanctify themselves if it is a problem, then you should sanctify with all your family members and the problem of the family will be settled the husband blaming the wife or the wife the husband and the children, the parents and parents' children, the problem will not be solved each of them should search out themselves and should fall at the feet of the Lord and then you will have some safety for your house what is told here? Leviticus 16:6 Aaron made an offering for him and his household it's not good for us to speak about the shortcomings, but make an atonement for it today, there are many in this world to depict our sins, but there is nobody to atone, make an atonement for it we all of us know to point out the faults of others that is an easy task and it's a little bit hard to realize their own faults the most hardest task is to make an atonement for that sin if you are asked to complain about this, then you will tell more and what he even does not know if you should be asked about a person, more than to ask himself, if you ask you, you will give more details but some of them will accept their faults they say that they are not right the drunkard will say that what he is doing is wrong, but he is not able to leave it if you are asked to do it it's not sufficient that you are accepting a false, you should make an atonement for it too he made an atonement for his household when we speak, say about Job every day, he was offering, making an atonement for his children Job 1:5, we can read this maybe my children might have cursed God in their hearts if they have sinned immediately, he will call them and will sanctify them and he will make them to clean themselves early in the morning, he will offer an offering he was a devout person who believed that his family should be made divine and an offering should be offered and made an atonement for them it's good that you are accepting your faults but what atonement have you made for this fault? God has done two things to make an atonement for man's sin one, he is sending his grace and secondly, his truth what is told there? by grace and truth, sin will be rectified he is sending his grace and truth that a man's sin might be purged what should we do to make an atonement for our sin? the Lord is sending two things, even so, we should have two things to rectify our sins God is not making an atonement for himself, but he is sending his grace to make an atonement for it not only, he teaches them theory, but he also practically sends his grace for it not only commanding them to do this and that, but sends his grace for that a man, in order to make an atonement for himself, should do two things one thing is numbers 14 numbers 16 forty-four to forty-eight there, in order to make an atonement, offerings were offered firstly, you should offer yourself as a sacrifice we should make a atonement in the right manner, in the presence of God take a censer and put fire and take off from the altar and put on incense and go quickly into the congregation and make an atonement for them on one hand, when we consider this, it shows prayer life if there should be a right atonement for sin in a man's child of God's life, then he should make this offering in the right manner you should put fire from the altar and take the censer and there will be a right atonement for your sin for the sickness to be healed, for the sins to be atoned, we should have a good prayer life have you prayed for the deliverance in your life? have you prayed for the grace of God? how much have you prayed? you might have many failures you might have many weaknesses you might have many unclean thoughts and you might have practices which you cannot leave how much have you sacrificed yourself in the presence of God to be delivered? to which extent have you sought for the grace of God? Leviticus 19:22 what is told there? the priest shall make an atonement to be clean and then shall his sins be forgiven if there should be an atonement, then his sins should be forgiven and you ask of the Lord and receive the remission for his sin you repent for the failures in the presence of God and plead for it since many of their sins are not forgiven, their sickness is not healed since many sins are not forgiven, Satan is not going out when a man of Palsi came to the presence of God what did the Lord say? a man of God, your son, your sins are forgiven and immediately after his sins are forgiven, he began to rise up when it is atonement for sin, means forgiveness of sins atonement means giving your forgiveness of sins and nextly, leading into a life where there is no sin you complain that your husband is not right you say that your wife is not right you say that your children are not right you say that your parents are not right how much of atonement have you made for your household? how much have you prayed for your household? it's more you have preached to them, but it's less that you have shed tears for them in the presence of God it's time for you to stand in the presence of God to make an atonement for your children and your household if you are like a good job, then you will do that work if you are a priest like Aaron, then you will do that work God is sending his mercy and truth in order to make an atonement for every man fourthly a man of God should bless his household firstly, he should walk in the ways of the Lord secondly, he should command this household to be sanctified thirdly, make an atonement for his household fourthly, you should bless your household 1 Chronicles 46 verse 43 it is the responsibility of the leader of that house to bless that house are you blessing your household? if we should curse our own family members, what do you use? some of them tell their own children that you will not prosper if his own children is not prospering, what will he tell about the others? you just think and see? have you blessed your children? you will bless on the wedding? or you will bless them on the birthday? is it so? you should bless your house who else will come and bless if you are not able to bless them? the godly people those days blessed their house members today, blessing is very short now, they expect to receive blessings from somewhere else, you can get the blessings even from your household if you read the word of God properly we see that the brethren blessed and the father blessed and mother blessed and the father-in-law blessed and so on all these members have blessed him father-in-law blessed him now, they are only blessing their daughter-in-law on the wedding day after that, the father-in-law's blessing is not needed for them and they are not in a position to bless them I told one thing you worked in the counsel of your father-in-law? Moses worked beautifully, helping to the counsel of the father-in-law immediately, he said, my father-in-law is not like the father-in-law in the days of Moses see how it is now, all of them speak in a different manner like this if your practice to bless, only then in future, your children also will begin to bless you see the church members? whatever they, whoever they see, what will they say? they say, God bless you and whoever they see, they will say, Maranatha and whoever we see, we say, praise the Lord that Muslims will hail one another like this and the other Muslim will say in reply, another hailing thing when you see, read the history of Ruth when the master of the field came, all the servants hailed him immediately, he is in turn blessing them that is how they were in practice those days as he came in, they blessed him that was their practice and they will bless him and in turn, he will bless them are we blessing like this? have we any practice to bless like this? do we have this practice or not? Ruth, chapter 2 verse 4 and Boaz came from Bethlehem and said, into the reapers, the Lord be with you and they replied him the Lord blessed thee see how it was their practice? now, when we are going out of a house, nobody knows where we are going and when we are going, we do not tell our parents or the husband or wife or the father or children the old mother will be at home, he will not say that he is going and coming that mother will sit thinking that he will come and tell and go, but he will go somewhere are you blessing? if you practice like this, your children in their future will come in that same practice what is the example you have kept for your children? if you fight and if you go ahead for four feet, then he will go for ten feet when one house, the son beat the father and in a great tension, he beat him he beat him, brought him out of the room and to the gate he brought him, he beat him in the room and brought him out and went into the gate you see how it is? he dragged him into the gate and the father then said, you just stop it he asked why? he said, why should I stop? he said that I have bitten my father and I brought him until here, but I have not cast him out he said that I have bitten my father, but I have not brought him to the gate, not put him out, but you will cast him out and to the measure you meet, to that same measure, it will be met unto you and it will be even added out of measure if you have practiced to bless, then even your children will bless you you should teach them like this whatever might happen, you should bless may it be your old mother or father or your brethren, whoever it is, whatever evil they have done, you should bless them Jesus, who was beaten up into the cross, he was blessing all the people who went on the way whatever they might do, you should bless. Matthew five forty-four. even if they curse you, you should bless them. Romans twelve sixteen. Romans twelve fourteen. even if you are persecuted, you should bless them. first Peter three nine. even if they do evil unto you, you should bless them. first Corinthians four twelve. even if they put you to shame, you should bless them. these are the words of God. if they curse you, you should bless them. if they persecute you, you should bless them. if they do evil against you, you should bless them. let them scold you, you bless them. if so, what should be done? your heart should be filled with blessing for out of, what is in your heart, where your mouth will bless. if your heart is filled with the blessings, then your mouth will bless and not curse. if your heart is filled with the blessings, then your mouth will bless and not curse. a mother cursed when she lost her money. she lost many silver coins. and many thousands she has lost. therefore, being greed, she was cursing. when she cursed to a great extent, the son came. he called his mother and said, you have cursed to a great extent, but it is I who have taken it. judges, seventeen chapters told. a thousand hundred silver coins have been thefted. and the mother cursed a lot. the son thought, why the curse with all these coins, therefore he returned it to her. he said, you have cursed me, that my ear should hear, keep your money with you. it's I who has stolen that money. immediately, that mother said, son, thou shalt be blessed of the Lord. before changes it. before one night, the curse that she had made, she, the whole world will be cursed. but when she saw that the son accepted his fault, immediately she said, son, be the blessed of the Lord. this is the Old Testament. in the New Testament, even if one has stolen one thing, you should bless them, will be said like this. because it is her son, she blessed him. will you bless like this? even if we don't get it, will be blessed. the New Testament blessing is different. he blessed his household. you should not curse your own children. you should not use abusing words to your children. you should not speak disrespectful words with your children. you should not curse your own household. if the stranger is cursing, let him go, but if you curse your own children, what is the use? some wife will say to the husband, you go and will never come back. can we can tell like this? if he does not come back, will he sit and cry? should not do so. you should practice to bless. Proverbs thirty-one fifteen. a watchful woman is feeding her household. we should have a practice to give meat to the household. firstly, giving salvation to them is a spiritual meat. secondly, giving, making them firm in the doctrines is a strong meat. we can see about the strong meat in Hebrews five twelve and fourteen, that about the doctrine which is the strong meat. you should lead your family or the household into salvation. you should lead your household members into deep doctrines. thirdly, literally, you should learn how to feed your family. some of them are very miser in their life. if the Lord has not given you, then it is alright, but you should not be a miser when Lord has given you. she rises up in the night and gives meat to her household. are you giving good food to your parents? are you giving food to your father-in-law, mother-in-law? that which is spoilt? and that which is decayed? and that which was stinking? I don't know how your conscience is working. in some places, these things are happening. will you eat it? if you consider the masters or the great people in this world, that they will check it up with their wife or their family, household members. if there is a poison? or have they done anything? they will check it and taste it, only then they will provide food because if there is any poisoning. if their own household members comes, then everything will be meat and milk and everything will flourish, if their husband's household comes, then everything will be empty. similarly, if the household of the husband comes, then he will go daily to the market, if the wife's family members come, then he will never go at all. if their own relatives come, then they will look after them well, but after other comes, then they will not look after them. you should give meat to their household. you should never be partial in it. some of them will not have hands to give. the hands will never stretch out. it's wrong. your hands should stretch out like this. better it is to receive than to give. will a mother hide anything from her son? if she is hiding, what she is hiding for? if she is hiding for the child. a family came as a family to the ministry. the husband was placed in a different place. mother was in a ministry in different place. and the children, one was in one faith home and another another faith home. and two children are in the same faith home. and the other children are in different places and different places. and those children are in ministry today. and the servant of God in those days are saying. they will go for visiting. in the houses that they are going, they will give a bun or bread or any cake like this. these two sisters will not eat in that place. because these children will come back home for lunch. in faith home, there is no food in the afternoon. and those days, there was not food in the government like as today. they will not get food either in the school or in the faith home. they used to go early in the morning for visiting and if anybody gives anything in the houses of believers, they will take and keep. when these children come back in the afternoon, they will give them this half cake or bun or bread and they will go back to school. see how the faith home children have been grown? how are we? how are we growing our children? are we keeping everything locked and finally it is decayed and we throw out and again pray that the Lord should give? that's because you have no good mind. you have a no, broad mind. if it's a mother or a father, whenever you receive it, you should make them eat and you should enjoy looking at them. the mother will be happy looking at the children eating and if you are not doing so, you are not a mother. a watchful woman is giving meat to her household. you being partial cannot go to heaven. if you are partial and consider that it is your husband's family or wife's family, you should not think like this. if the Lord should be partial, what will happen? Proverbs thirty-one twenty-seven. you should be always considerable about your household things. some of them do not know what's happening in their family. they do not know what the children are studying. they do not know what they are studying. they do not know when they are, at what time it's going and coming out. he does not know how his business is running. he doesn't know that he is eating in his house and hounds, parents are laboring. you should be considerable about the things in your house. when the Lord said, Hezekiah, that he will take him, he said, you set right your house's whole things and I will take you. always, you should be considerable about your family matters. family matters means spiritual matters and also things concerning heaven. John three twelve. the things concerning the world and things concerning heaven. you should be always concerned about your spiritual life and also things which are concerning the world. about earthly things means about your work and property and your husband and wife and your work and so on, concerning everything, you should have a knowledge. when you finish your race, only you, if you have everything right, you can finish your race. the prophetizer came to Hezekiah and said, that you shall not live, therefore you set right your house. he was not able to set right things in his house. and therefore he cried. and fifteen years were added to him. it took fifteen years to set right his house. how many years do you need to set right your thing, house? whatever might be, your family things should be done in a perfect manner. firstly. if one is not inquiring his own household, then he is worse than a believer. you should always inquire your household. why are they not good? why are they becoming a saint? why didn't you come to the prayer? why are you sad? what is the problem? what sickness? you should not be like a stranger and without inquiring. if one is not providing for his own house, then he is denied the faith and is worse than an infidel. because the Lord is the one who is inquiring. first Peter five seven, it is said that he is. that he is inquiring about you. as the Lord is inquiring you, you should inquire your family. some of them will be very sick, but they will never look at them at all. Matthew twenty-five forty-three. I was sick, but you did not see me. when they said, when, when we were sick, he said, when the least of them, when they were sick, I was sick. some of them, when they become sick, they will not inquire them. they will never help them in anything. some of them think that if the husband is becoming sick, the Lord has touched him, let him break. some of the parents, if they are becoming sick, the children will not even help them with a plate. it is not so, we should be the ones inquiring. when you read about Nehemia. whoever comes from Jerusalem, he will run up and ask as to how is Jerusalem? his mind was completely concerned about Jerusalem. even if anybody comes from Jerusalem, he will go and inquire as to how is Jerusalem is, then they will say that the walls are broken and that the city is burnt, then immediately he will sit and cry. although he was in Babylon, his mind was fully upon Jerusalem. that is why it is said, that, O Jerusalem, if I should forget you, then my right hand should forget its words. O Jerusalem, if I forget you, let my tongue be clean to my mouth. in Nehemia one-two, we see that he grunts and asks the person as to how Jerusalem is, he said, that Jerusalem is broken down and the gates are burnt, immediately he sat and cried. if you see a believer, you inquire him. if you see a servant of God, you inquire him. if you see a new believer, you inquire him. if you are in this campus and if anybody comes in, if he is an unknown person, if you inquire by how is, what is come for, what is wrong? we are not practicing it. We are not practicing it. If you are inquiring, you should inquire with a broad face. When we see in Philippians four ten. Saint Paul says that, I am very joy because. Philippians four ten. I rejoiced greatly because you had care for me and that flourished again. Even if the close relation comes to your house, you will never even call them come. What have you practiced from the word of God? Your brother or your father-in-law, any relative of your family comes, if you are not able to give respect to them and they come to your house, do not take the Bible. The word of God which you have will judge you. The law is in this book. The word of God which you hear will justify you. Even if they have done evil to you, if they come to your doorstep, then you should call them. You should not say that it's your husband or wife or blame anybody else. I rejoiced greatly because your care was upon me. Are you teaching your household like this? How are you practicing your household in your life? If you are Abraham, you will ask him to keep his ways. If you are cheeky, then you will command sanctification in your family. If you are Aaron, then you will teach your household members to make an atonement. If you are David, then you will teach your family to be blessing. If you are a watchful woman, then you will give food to your household members and inquire their needs. If you are a good believer, then you will inquire your family. These are the things which we have to perform to our household members. When we do such things, then I and my household will serve the Lord and we have the opportunity to enter into the glory of the Lord. If you desire such a life? If you desire such a life, then close your eyes and kneel down. The Lord not only sends his truth but sends grace along with it. Lord, I desire to do such things to my family. What are you designed to do to your household? Are you wanting to practice a divine life for your household? It's so, he will just enter into the hands of the Lord. May the Lord alone preserve the ways of the Lord. Hereafter, let your household members be sanctified. Let the sin of the family members be atoned. Your household members will be blessed. And the household members will be fed with meat. Your household members will be inquired. You yield yourselves, Lord, I do want to do such things to my household. And the Lord shall fill you with his grace.
Praise the Lord, 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 Hallelujah. Your household members will be blessed.